Good afternoon, everybody. I want to call the May twenty eighth Planning Commission meeting to order. Roll call, Mel, please. Here.
Philip Harris.
Here.
Alan Young.
Here.
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 Jennifer Guthrie.
Frank Martin.
Thanks, and we have a call. Okay. Next to order of business, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty sixth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve minutes from April twenty second meeting.
Second. Yeah, motion and second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, okay.
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, motion carried. Okay, today, guys, we have three public hearings and one site plan. Our first public hearing today will be conducted by Mr. Andy Bauer, and he will explain, um, his first one. Come back again, and I think he's going to explain to us exactly what we're here to do today, right, Mr. Bauer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so here.
Before we get into the first public hearing, I know we have a quite a nice crowd out here in the audience. Let me just quickly go through the public hearing guidelines. So, Planning Department staff will present each application. Then the Planning Commission Chairman will entertain questions from the commissioners. The Chairman will then recognize the applicant. The applicant can approach the board at the microphone and state anything that they need to be, that they request to be heard. Then the Chairman will open the public hearing. If any of the members of the public would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, physical address. Address all your questions to the Planning Commissioners. Try not to repeat anything that's already been said. And then, at that point, the Chairman will allow the applicant to address any comments. The Chairman will then close the public hearing, and then the Commissioners will hold any discussion and vote on the application. So with that, we'll get into our first public hearing. It's ZA two five zero nine. Heba's a conditional use permit. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit approval for a lounge bar use at Suite two ten of Pelican Place. Pelican Place is located at thirty eight hundred Gulf Shores Parkway. A lounge bar use is only allowed by conditional use permit. It's worth noting that this application is only for the use of a lounge bar at Suite two ten of Pelican Place, not for the lounge bar uses throughout the entirety of the Pelican Place Shopping Center. Um, I'll quickly go through some of the stuff we went through last month because this was tabled during the last month's meeting because I know a couple of the Commissioners weren't here last month. Also, we have probably additional people in the crowd that were not here last week. Thirty eight hundred, I think all of you know that thirty eight hundred Gulf Shores Parkway is Pelican Place. Site location map is located on the screen. It's in north Gulf Shores, to the, on the east side of Gulf Shores Parkway, south of Target. Uh, the zoning of this property is PUD overlay with the underlying zoning of general business. This property is originally part of the Craft Farms RPC and was designated for commercial uses. That commercial use designation allows uses which are within the general business zoning district, and a lounge bar use is only allowed by conditional use permit in the BG zoning district. Some of the background, uh, from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty two, Cohiba Dunes was operating at this location. It operated as a cigar bar with a principal use of tobacco sales. In twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the business license for Cohiba Dunes was referred to the City Council for review um, by the Police Department. The City Council renewed both licenses with strict compliance with the conditions set forth in two resolutions. In July of two thousand twenty four, uh, we received a new business license application for Heba's karaoke and arcade bar. Uh, the new business license triggered review of the proposed use. The proposed use represents a lounge bar use, and again, lounge bar uses are only allowed by conditional use permit, which requires Planning Commission and City Council approval. This application was tabled at last month's meeting. Um, a little bit of the applicant narrative. Heba seeks to create an entertainment venue that provides fun, safe, and well-managed uh, venue that brings something fresh to the Gulf Shores entertainment scene. They'd like to transition away from the previous tobacco bar model that focuses on creating space that caters to families earlier in the evening before shifting into a traditional bar setting at night. From four P M. to midnight, Heba's will offer a safe and enjoyable space for families and responsible patrons looking for a fun night out. The last call for drinks is set for two thirty, ensuring an orderly close at three A M. Uh, we, here's a synopsis of last month's report. We really focus on the CUP uh, criteria, which, uh, in the Article three dash four of the zoning ordinance contains fourteen criteria for which a CUP is to be reviewed against. Um, is a proposed use in accordance with all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. Again, a lounge bar use is only allowed by CUP in the BG zoning district. Uh, is a proposed use compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city and other governmental agencies. We basically looked at Vision two thousand twenty five and then land use plan. Uh, those two documents stipulate the City of Gulf Shores shall be safety-oriented and focused on family-friendly activities. A bar that opens, is open till three A M., we do not believe, uh, is, um, complies with the stated goals of the city. And then does a proposed use provide economic benefits, enhance the surrounding uses in the area and of the city? Again, this city staff does not believe late-night bar lounge uses, um, benefit or provide benefits to the city. So we did provide you an addendum in your, uh, packet that went out last Friday. Again, to remind the Planning Commission, the purpose is to recommend, make a recommendation to the City Council on the CUP of whether or not about bar lounge use is appropriate at Suite two ten of Pelican Place. The determination, or your determination shall be based on the city's zoning regulations, code of ordinances, long-range planning documents, and locational and site-specific design factors related to Suite two ten. So in the addendum, it includes the current regulations for alcohol sales uh, contained in the city's code of ordinances. We've provided more detailed information about existing tenants' hours of operation of Pelican Place. And then we've also provided specific locational environmental design factors for Suite two ten. So the current regulations for bar lounge, uh, hours of operations, which are found in the city's code of ordinances, our current regulations allow the sale of alcohol or prohibit the sale of alcohol between three A M. and seven A M., which means a bar lounge use may sell alcohol until three A M. in the morning. So any bar in the City of Gulf Shores is allowed to sell alcohol until three A M. in the morning. Existing conditions, Pelican Place is a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant uses. Thirty of the forty-three tenant spaces are filled. Most of the businesses operate between nine A M. and eight P M. Seven tenants remain open after eight P M., and the latest tenant closes at ten P M. Heba's, as you know, has a closing time of three A M. We also reviewed, uh, the crime prevention through environmental design standards, which are called SEPTED. These are national standards based on designing environments to reduce crime and increase community safety by creating spaces that naturally deter criminal behavior and improve the quality of life. SEPTED is based on one simple principle, that the physical, physical design of the environment affects hu- human behavior either positively or negatively. So the four guidelines that we reviewed, uh, this application against are natural surveillance. This emphasizes the importance of visibility so that legitimate users and passerbyers and law enforcement can observe activities. Natural access control. Uh, surrounding closed businesses reduce the flow of legitimate foot traffic, which would otherwise help discourage crime. Territorial reinforcement. Active surrounding businesses create a sense of ownership and caretaking over public spaces. And then, number four, maintenance and activity support. When an area is active, physical and dis- physical and social disorder, disorder can accumulate, making it less desirable and less safe. As you can see, all of these, uh, uh, four criteria are very interrelated. Basically, if you've got an active space, is more or less likely to have criminal activity or bad behavior. So when we applied these to the specific location of Suite two ten, um, Heba's occupies an interior, uh, unit which has limited natural surveillance and territorial enforcement. Heba's, uh, on the right, shown by, the location is shown by the star. It fronts on a pedestrian courtyard, and the parking for Heba's is to the rear of the development. Heba's also has very limited viewing from vehicular traffic. Another thing that's very difficult is because the parking area and pedestrian plaza are kind of outside of Heba's, it's difficult to control things like loitering or people just accommodating out or, uh, crowding outside of the venue. Heba's also operates between the hours of eight P M. and three A M. It's surrounded by closed businesses that are closed, thereby limiting the natural access control and activity support. Again, only three businesses are in operation in this portion of Pelican Place along the pedestrian corridor. And then all of the tenants within Pelican Place close by ten P M. So after ten P M., there's really no activity at this location except for Heba's. And then three, based on those criteria, we do not believe a bar is appropriate at this location. So recommendation, very similar to last month's. Um, again, the primary, primary factors in review of a CUP application is the need for the proposed use and how the use represents a positive impact on Gulf Shores and its residents. Um, in both twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the business license was referred to the City Council for review at the request of the Police Department due to safety issues stemming from late-night bar activities. Two, Heba's late-night lounge bar business plan is not compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city. Three, late-night bar lounge uses negatively impacts communities in a variety of ways. And then four is a new, um, new to this, uh, addendum. Using the crime prevention through environmental design standards, a bar lounge use is not appropriate at this location. Therefore, we recommend that the Planning Commission deny the, uh, CUP application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andy. Do we have any questions? Question?
Not yet.
Okay, uh, is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to address the, or open up the?
Um, thank you, guys, for, uh, letting us come back here and speak. So I want to start with the addendum, which was the SEPTED because that's the new thing. Um, I think everything else is pretty much the same. The SEPTED was the new thing, um, which was part of the addendum. The SEPTED wasn't cited during the original business review. Um, it also was incited during the prior occupancy for Cohiba Dunes. Um, and it also wasn't cited when the space operated as a cigar bar. Um, so the SEPTED is very new to us. Um, and it's only being brought up after a full, you know, CUP application was filed under this new ownership, um, which, um, I'm in charge of. And there's some things that are interesting with the SEPTED. It, it seems, the, the SEPTED makes it seem like the business is kind of put back into like an alley. And I think based off those pictures, it can be seen that it's not. Um, you know, our space fronts a pedestrian courtyard. Um, we're in a commercial district with public a- access. Um, there's actual several businesses that are right next to Heba's, um, including the Yard Milkshake Bar, which is actually open until eleven P M., not ten P M. Um, and Pelican Place itself has onsite private security. Also, there was a mention made about, um, that crowding and loitering outside the venue. Uh, we have onsite security, um, every single day of the week, and on Fridays and Saturdays, we have three to four onsite security. Um, that, um, um, they circle the parking lot. You know, we actually stopped, uh, stopped serving alcohol at two forty-five. Um, our last call is at two thirty. We sto- we stopped serving alcohol at two forty-five. Um, and we have everybody at least, um, on the outside of the property at, by three A M. At that point, our onsite security stays outside until everybody is off the property. Um, so that's how we kind of handle all of that in terms of loitering and, um, crowd control in terms of, with it being, um, late at night. Um, the other thing I want to mention is, is that this is, the narrative for this place is that it's a late-night bar. Um, I think in our business plan, we've tried to prove that that's not the part that we're focused on. Um, I, I understand that this place has always sort of functioned that way, but we do think that there's a piece of late night that can still function within a family-friendly ethos. Um, I think that when we look at family-friendly, um, and we also look at late night, late-night activities should not deter from the family-friendly activities that happen. Um, our late-night activities, we are only really focused on late night in regard to creating an environment and a space for our hospitality workers. Um, this place has always been a place for hospitality workers to go after they get off of work. Um, and so that's the reason why, that's the late-night part for us, that we consider late night. Um, outside of that, we're focused on being a entertainment, uh, centric venue. You know, focusing on things that will, um, entertain you when you get there. Um, not just being a bar where you come and you drink. Um, and so, um, when you look at our business plan, we've touched on that a little bit with, um, the wine bar, um, with sipping, um, doing, um, activities, um, that do include, um, drinking as well. Um, but there's an activity involved. Um, we have karaoke. That's the bulk of our business now. Um, it is not cigars. It is not dancing, DJing. I mean, dancing, obviously, if you're singing. But the bulk of our business is karaoke, which is a family-friendly activity. I think that that falls in line with the Gulf Shores, uh, vision of twenty twenty five. That is a family-friendly activity. And right now, since we are, can only be twenty-one and up, um, it's not a family-friendly activity. And we get asked all the time for, with people that have, you know, younger kids, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, hey, can we come in there? And we have to turn them away, right? So, um, we're trying to turn this place into something that is family-friendly um, and also has this piece of late night, but to do it in a responsible, respectful, and safe way. Um, and then the last thing I just want to make a note of is that, um, last time there was a question or a mention of food, um, and, um, there was a little bit of confusion. Um, when we looked into it, um, we verified that we actually do, or at least underneath the, um, current business license, um, uh, we have a category two food permit, um, which does allow us to prepare and serve limited time slash temperature control for safety foods. Um, so if you look at our business plan, um, where we're headed is making flatbreads, charcuterie boards, um, uh, pretzels, things of that sort. Um, that is all allowed underneath that pri- that, uh, category two food permit. Um, we have already, uh, redone the entire kitchen part, um, uh, to make sure that we're upholding, um, the standards, um, that are needed underneath that food permit, that category two food permit as well, which is a two-compartment sink and a necessary handwashing station. So we're set up. Um, we also just purchased a, um, a, uh, an oven. Uh, we do not have a hood. We're not allowed to, uh, do any, um, uh, sort of, um, food items that would require a hood underneath that food permit. Um, so we have purchased an oven, um, so we can, we can start food. Um, so again, um, everything that we're trying to do, and I feel like everything that we have done is in line with, um, everything that it is that you guys are looking for, um, even though we're, um, being suggested as a denial for it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the, uh, public hearing. Anybody would like to come and address, talk about this location, please feel free to do so. Come up to the mic, identify yourself. Yes, ma'am. Okay, take your time.
Good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Gilda Green. I live at two five five Royal and Craft Farms. And their property and our property between us is a small lake. And with the late-night hours over there, we can hear the squealing of the tires from the cars and the boom-boom of the music. It's a little much for such a nice subdivision to have to put up with. I think if you're trying to put a business somewhere that has to have an exemption to operate, I don't think we really need that. Now, if they want to close at ten o'clock like everybody else in the subdivision, uh, the shopping center does, that might be okay. But all this late night, you know, we're not New Orleans. We're just not. And I would appreciate if y'all would do something with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Danny Green, and I live in Craft Farms. Again, within hearing distance of this establishment. I think it, it might be a golden opportunity for y'all to, uh, consider perhaps correcting a wrong that was done in the past by approving this facility in the first place. And my understanding is there has been some police activity there. And in that vein, I find it very, very interesting that even the management feels like they need four or five security guards at night. I, I find that very interesting, that their internal thoughts on that. I realize they're trying to convince you, and their manager makes a very good presentation. But I just think it's the wrong place at the wrong time. Perhaps there are other places in Craft Farms, pardon me, in Gulf Shores that may be appropriate for this business. I just don't think this is it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Laurie Eberle, and I live on Little Lagoon. The thing that I noticed is the splash pad is so close to that and the milkshake bar. And after, um, the movies are out, how late does the splash pad stay open when you're inviting children to the same area? So that might be something to consider. Is it a spot where, um, trying to target parents and children to come to or not? So I guess the hours of splash pad operation would have something to do with it, too.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else? Mail, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we recommend denial of application ZA two five zero 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 nine.
You got a motion? To deny? Need a, need a second to proceed.
Second, but I, I would like to make a comment or, or two if that's all right. Um, one, I just want to go back and, and reiterate that this is, this decision is about a particular type of license and not the operator. But having said that, um, I do agree with the report that was added. This particular location seems to be problematic in that all the parking for this location is in the rear, and so that's where all the patrons, in and out of the back door, and historically, over the last several years, uh, that's where a lot of the problems have occurred outdoor, the building. We're not able to keep alcohol sales from going out. And the, and the, most of the police issues were in the parking lot. And we've been through three previous owners, not including yourselves. And so I'm not, no reference to the current operator. But the same problems continue, continue to exist through three different operators, uh, at that location, which I don't believe were bad operators totally, but it does tend to err on the side that the location is problematic for a bar lounge three A M. use. Uh, the other thing is we have basically twelve criteria that we measure a CUP approval by, and there are four out of twelve that I don't feel like meet the, uh, standards of the CUP approval. And just for anybody that wanted to look, that would be item four, eight, nine, and eleven. Uh, and they all come back to location and, uh, type issues. So, uh, I just, I'm gonna vote. I made a second for the no, but I didn't want to do that without at least a comment and explanation.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, Philip. Okay, okay, I would need, can we get a voice vote, Mel, please?
All right. Pete DeCaccio.
No.
Philip Harris.
No.
Fallon Young.
No.
Richard Lamar.
No.
Grant Brown.
What is the motion? I think the motion was to deny, so I think we need to restate our vote to make sure that's clear, because I believe the motion was made to deny. And in that case, I would vote yes for the motion to deny the request.
Pete DeCaccio.
Yes.
Philip Harris.
Yes.
Fallon Young.
Yes.
Grant Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Mary Long.
Yes.
United.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion denied, okay. Water Oaks Conservation Subdivision. And who's gonna be joining, Mr. Bauer, or is that you?
Yes, sir, that is me.
Okay, please proceed.
Just so everyone out there knows, that is a recommendation to the city council. This will appear on a city council committee, the whole work session, as well as a future city council meeting. I will notify the applicant prior to both those meetings so he can attend. Or if any of the public would like to attend.
They have the final say, right?
Yes, sir, the city council has a final say of approval, denial, or approval with the conditions on the conditional use permit. So the next application is ZA 2514, Water Oaks Conservation Subdivision, Plumbary Platt. The applicant seeks plumbary subdivision plat approval to subdivide 40 acres into 64 single-family lots. Forty-acre site is located on the south side of State Highway 180 West, between West Brigading Trail and Middle Brigading Trail. Here are the location maps on your screen. You can see on the left, well, on each map, the property is highlighted. The right-hand side shows the zoning of the property, it's currently zoned, majority of the property is zoned R15, which is single-family, high-density. There's a small portion of the property on the south side of the site, which abuts Brigading Trail that is zoned R14, medium-density, single-family residential. And you can see it's surrounded basically by existing single-family houses that are majority zoned R14. It's a pretty good history on this property, dating back maybe before I even worked for the city. So back in January 2005, the city council approved a PUD outline development plan to allow an 81-lot, single-family development on this property. May of 2005, the city council approved a final PUD preliminary plat for the 79-lot development. At this point, the applicant constructed some of the infrastructure but never finished it. In October of 2006, the city council approved a PUD amendment for the project. The amendment, or the project, maintained 79 single-family residential lots. In November of 2008, a one-year extension was approved for the PUD and plumbary plat. October 2009, the PUD plumbary plat, which was previously approved, expired. In March of 2018, the city council approved the rezoning of the property from R14 to R15. And then February of last year, the planning commission recommended denial of a PUD application to rezone the property and develop it with 69 single-family lots. The applicant subsequently withdrew that rezoning application. So here are some photographs on the screen that show the existing conditions. Again, it's partially developed. The development occurred back in 2005 when this 79-lot subdivision was previously approved by the city. Other than the roadways and infrastructure and sidewalks that have been built, majority of the lot is wooded with pine trees and some scrub oaks. There are three wetland areas totaling 17.8 acres on the property. And then the surrounding land uses, as mentioned, are predominantly single-family residential with an average of 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Already kind of covered the zoning of the property, the majority is R15, with a small portion to the south of the property is R14. Also, the applicant is applying for a conservation subdivision. Conservation subdivision is allowed by right in the R14 and R15 zoning districts. Land use plan designates the property as residential low, allowing 1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. Low-density residential uses are typically single-family detached homes and duplexes on large and medium-sized lots. Water Oaks subdivision is designed to protect the environmentally sensitive areas within and adjacent to the site and promotes a goal of the land use plan by doing so. Here are the proposal that is before you today. The right shows the proposed layout. They are using pretty much all of the existing streets and infrastructure in their new design. So the lots, the total site is just over 40 acres. They propose to develop the site with 64 single-family lots, which equates to 1.57 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the 1 to 5 dwelling units allowed by the land use plan. The minimum lot width is 52 feet. The largest lot is just over 14,000 square feet. The smallest lot is 4,665 square feet. Setbacks that are proposed are 25 feet in the front, 15 feet in the rear, and 10 feet on the sides. 25% of the property will remain as open space, which is 63% of the property. Of that 17 acres are wetlands, and just under 4 acres will be common active and passive open space. So you see the predominant, pretty much the developable portion of the property is on the north side, with the south side is all either jurisdictional or non-jurisdictional wetlands, except for the three lots that they propose along Brigading Trail. That will be access from State Highway 180. So the conservation subdivision regulations have a couple or quite a bit of regulations regarding the design of a conservation subdivision. One of those is how to determine the density. The density is based off of the underlying zoning and the maximum lots that you can achieve using the R15 and R14 zoning. And then the conservation subdivision regulations also allow some design flexibility related to the lot sizes and setbacks so that a conservation subdivision can be designed so that it best protects the natural areas of a site. So the applicant did perform a density determination. That density to study utilizing the underlying zoning yielded 66 lots. And that's diagram shown on the right is their density study. So they included the areas for the streets, did not include the wetlands, obviously. They provided open spaces and drainage as required by the conservation subdivision regulations in the density determination. Water Oaks Conservation Subdivision proposes 64 lots. Again, conservation subdivision regulations allow design flexibility. Water Oaks subdivision proposes reduced lot widths and lot sizes on the R15-zoned property, and then reduce building setbacks on the R15-zoned properties. The R14 lots that are along Brigading Trail comply with all of the R14 area and dimensional regulations in terms of lot size, lot width, and setbacks. The applicant did perform or submit a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study was based on development of the property of 65 single-family residential units. Traffic impact study analyzed existing traffic, future traffic, which will be generated by the development and recommended roadway improvements. So part of the proposed improvements are a westbound left-turn lane shall be constructed on State Highway 180 at the east entrance to the subdivision. This westbound left-turn lane on State Highway 180 will also serve the western entrance to the subdivision, as well as it will be extended further to the west and serve or provide a left-turn lane into West Brigading Trail. City staff have reviewed and agree with the findings of the traffic study. The proposed street plan, the applicant will use the two existing partially constructed vehicular access points to State Highway 180. The streets will be 20 feet wide and are designed in accordance with the subdivision regulations. The streets are placed within 50 feet-wide public rights-of-way. There are existing 5-foot sidewalks within the entire subdivision, so the applicant proposes to utilize those sidewalks where they can. Obviously, if they're in disrepair, they'll have to repair the sidewalks, but on the site visit, pretty much everything's been pretty decent repair, considering it sat there for 15 years or 20 years. The street names have been approved by the Baldwin E91 department. The applicant did submit an open space management plan as required by the conservation subdivisions. That regulations, that plan does comply with Article 11-10 of the conservation subdivision regulations. So they exceed the minimum open space required, minimum passive open space, and exceed or comply with the percent of open space in a contiguous tract. Pretty much all the wetlands are within a contiguous tract, so 94% of the open space is within a contiguous tract. In addition to the 5-foot-wide sidewalks, the applicant has provided pedestrian pathways and trails throughout the development that link the existing sidewalks, as well as all the residential lots to the natural features that are found within the property. Again, 17.8 acres of the property is either non-jurisdictional or jurisdictional wetlands. All of the wetlands are being preserved. You guys probably remember that our wetland protection regulations only protect jurisdictional wetlands. There is a small area of non-jurisdictional wetlands that are required to be protected by the conservation subdivision regulations. So in that aspect, they're going above and beyond our standard wetland protection regulations in order to comply with the conservation subdivision regulations. Wetlands are buffered by the 30 feet of natural vegetation as required by the wetland protection regulations, and neither the wetlands nor the wetland buffer are placed within the individual lots. The applicant is exploring the idea of protecting the wetlands with a conservation easement. They have reached out to the South Alabama Land Trust, and it's currently under consideration by the land trust for accepting the donation and protection of the wetlands in a conservation easement. We do have a letter in our file from the South Alabama Land Trust stating that fact. Landscaping, this subdivision must comply with the standard landscape provisions in Section 6-6C of the subdivision regulations. It does comply. There are perimeter landscaping required between the lots and State Highway 180. There's also land, street trees provided in the public rights-of-way. And then landscaping is provided around these stormwater facilities. The stormwater drainage plan has been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. It does comply with the minimum standards of the city of Gulf Shores. The site basically drains from the north to south, and the site drainage will be directed into basically four existing stormwater ponds before being released into the wetlands, treated and released into the wetlands. The applicant has required, did submit a draft covenants and restrictions. That document provides provisions for voting rights, common areas, maintenance of the subdivision, use restrictions, enforcement, as well as architectural control. The houses must be a minimum of 2,400 square feet, can be a maximum of three stories. And then it also imposes architectural restrictions for walls, doors, roofs, porches, and materials for all of those architectural features. The covenants and restrictions also prohibit short-term rental within Water Oaks subdivision, which it's already prohibited by our zoning ordinance, but it is in their covenants and restrictions. Here's a couple examples of included in their architectural guidelines, which were in their covenants and restrictions, showing kind of examples of the houses that will be built if this subdivision is approved. Under the department and agency review, the fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the plans. Also, the utility companies have reviewed and approved the plans. We did receive a plan from Baldwin EMC. So in the location of the electrical utilities, the lighting plan, things of that nature, the applicant will be required to provide conduit for telecom broadband utilities prior to final plat approval. The applicant is requesting three waivers from the subdivision regulations, as allowed by the subdivision regulations. So waiver number one is a waiver to Section 6-3 street plan, which states if the property is, if the adjacent property is undeveloped, the right-of-way of any street shall be continued and extended to the property line. As you know, Water Oaks subdivision is bounded on three sides by wetlands, so road extensions are not possible in this instance. Section 6-3 also requires a minimum of 6 feet-wide sidewalks to be placed in subdivisions. As I've previously stated, that the applicant proposes to use the existing 5-foot-wide sidewalks. And then the third waiver request is the subdivision regulations require street trees to be planted on private lots and not within the rights-of-way, public rights-of-way. And the applicant proposes to plant those street trees within the public rights-of-way. Staff supports all three waiver requests. And basically, two of those are waiver requests that are granted very often by the planning commission. So with that, staff recommends approval of the plumbary subdivision plat with numerous conditions. Condition number one, approve the three requested waivers to the subdivision regulations. Condition two, prior to recordation of the final plat, the following items shall be addressed. Sinus shall be provided along the wetlands notifying future property owners of the protected nature of the wetlands and 30-foot wetland buffer. Two B, the wetland conservation easement shall be executed in the instrument number provided on the plat. The conservation easement shall include clear restrictions on the use of open space and shall include the restrictions provided in Article 11-10 of the zoning ordinance. Condition two C, the architectural regulations shall, architectural regulations included in the covenants and restrictions shall be submitted as a separate document and include housing-type street sections, typical lot, street elevations, and lot setback layouts. The reason we would like those to be submitted as a separate document is so that it can be approved as a separate document because the city cannot enforce the covenants and restrictions. So if we approve it, or the planning commission, if the planning commission approves it, then we can enforce it as a separate document. Condition two D, the recorded instrument number for the subdivision covenants and restrictions shall be provided on the subdivision plat. Condition three, prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, the following comments shall be addressed. All tree protection devices shall be installed. Three B, details of the proposed pathways shall be provided, and the applicant shall work with city staff to determine the most logical location for the pathways. Condition three C, common area number two shall be redesigned to be accessible to the largest practical number of lots within the subdivision. Condition three D, drainage and utilities shall be provided in accordance with the subdivision regulations of Baldwin EMC. And then condition three E, updated electrical plans shall be submitted showing the new subdivision layout. And the final condition is a permit from the Alabama Department of Transportation shall be provided prior to commencement of work within the State Highway 180 right-of-way. And with that, I'll be happy to answer. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, this subdivision originally was set up for 80 homes?
Seventy-nine homes back. It was approved for in 2005, yes, sir.
And it wasn't a conservation subdivision needed, was it?
No, sir. I think it was a planned unit. It was probably, my regulations R14 is zoned with a planned unit development overlay.
This just looks like a very well organized presentation as far as protecting the wetlands, doing the traffic, you know, the, if ALDOT proves all the traffic changes, that this should be a much better subdivision to deal with than 2005. That's my comments. What are your thoughts?
Well, we recommend approval, so. I mean, it complies with the conservation subdivision regulations. The applicant has done a really good job to protect all of the natural wetlands and natural features of the site. The other item that's been brought up in the past was, you know, the traffic on State Highway 180. The traffic study recommended a left turn lane into the development. Staff recommended they go ahead and extend that left turn lane all the way to West Brigadoon Trail, and they've done that, so in an effort to try to, you know, solve some of the traffic issues that residents have complained about in the past.
Andy, is there any existing infrastructure for drainage utilities on-site now?
So a lot of that is already in place, yes, sir. It's my understanding that utilities are in place, drainage infrastructure is in place, and the applicant, the applicant can speak to this better than I can, but they are in the process of reviewing all of that to see what can be used and what can't be used, will have to be, you know, kind of reworked, but a lot of that is in place, yes, sir.
It's been there 20 years.
Been there 20 years, yes, sir. And obviously, part of this, part of the application is, will require all of it to be brought up to current codes and regulations if it's approved.
Andy, the city will be taking over these roads after?
Yes, sir. They're proposed to be public streets. So eventually, when they go through the process of, after final plat approval, there's a warranty timeframe they can, you know, ask the city to take them over in the future.
Do we have a system in place regarding this infrastructure and this, the fact that it's already 20 years old? Is there?
I'm gonna let the city engineer help with that question. She knows more about it than I do.
So as far as the existing infrastructure that's in place, we are looking at that. We're working with the design engineer for this project to make sure that it all meets current codes, as Andy said, and that it's in new condition. So any roadway, any infrastructure, drainage infrastructure, those type of things that goes in will have a normal lifespan. It won't be 20 years into the lifespan when we accept it. So for example, you know, they're gonna remove a lot of the existing road bed material that's out there because some of the fines have settled out of the road bed, and it's still, it's not, doesn't have the same structural integrity that a new road would. So they're gonna remove some of that and replace it. You know, we've worked with the geotech engineer to evaluate all of that and determine which areas that needs done in. Same thing with the storm drain that's in place. We have videos of all of those lines. We're reviewing those videos to make sure that the lines are in new condition, and if they're not, those sections will be replaced or repaired.
Okay, thank you.
And then once the road is accepted, it will go through the standard warranty process that puts it in a two-year warranty period and will, will monitor it and inspect it again at the end of the two years.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're not caught holding that back.
Good questions.
Andy, I have a couple of questions. So I get the conservation plan and the, in the less density, which I appreciate less than what's by right. The flexibility to reduce the setbacks in the lot sizes a little bit, so I have questions about, about that. Are all of the lots, do they all have the same setbacks, 25-foot fronts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm just going back to how do these function when they're done and looking back at our R15 and increasing that setback. Wanna make sure we get the cars in the driveways and they're not sticking out over sidewalks. So my other question is, are the sidewalks outside of these property lines and in the right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got three flood zones, a V-zone, a A-zone, and a X. X does not really require any elevation requirement, but is it intended that all of the houses are built on pilings with parking underneath?
Probably defer that to the applicant to be 100% sure on the answer to that question.
Is the applicant here today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming today, sir. You Mr. DeCher?
I am David DeCher of Codra Engineering. Andy and Jenny and everyone else, sorry, stole a lot of my thunder, but, so Commissioner Harris, so to answer your question about the houses, are they all gonna be elevated regardless of the flood zone? That, that is the intent, yes, so that they provide ample parking. The sidewalks are two feet from the back of curb, so a little bit closer than in some instances, so you have, you will have a little more depth in your driveway to the sidewalk.
Okay, well, that, that kind of answers a lot of my concern because we made the modifications to the R15 zoning because after we saw some of these subdivisions built with 25-foot setbacks, cars were blocking the sidewalks. So I just wanna make sure we're gonna function like we want them to function, but the garages piling, that to me, that solves that issue. And then my other question, which Andy already answered, is that covenants and restrictions will be approved and adopted as part of this plan? So we get what you're showing us, that's what will get built, and if there's any major modifications to that, then this plan has to come back for a whole nother application to middle.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That answered my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the applicant?
I actually have one more question regarding the drainage. Did we, and I may have missed it in here, what's our year, it said minimum standard in our notes here. What flood year are we looking at here for that?
10-year.
10-year.
So we actually over to 10 on every year up to the 25. So the 25, we reduced 10% below pre. Down to the 10-year, we're 20% below, and the further you go, we get all the way down to 40% below the precondition as it is today. So the existing ponds that are there being, how we're doing that is, you know, obviously it was approved before at some point. The same standards were in place, but the ponds, we wanna provide that extra amount of safety, so we're gonna enlarge the ponds so that we don't have that issue going forward for those frequent years that happen all the time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
I'd say the only other thing that I would add is we did have a discussion with ALDOT about the widening, the proposed widening that y'all seen all the way down even to West Brigadoon Trail, and they are in agreement with doing that. Obviously, we have to still permit that, and they have to approve it, but they have seen the concept, they're in agreement with us doing the widening in that section to help improve the safety there. And the other thing, we actually got a letter from South Alabama Letter, or South Alabama Land Trust today that said their board did vote on it, and they would, they would have accepted, you know, obviously it has to get to that point, but their board did acknowledge that they received the project information and would accept it.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. This time we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody like to come speak on this item? Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Finley. I live on 16280 Brigadoon Trail. Been there for five years, and family's been down here since 1960. Besides you, Fallon, do any of y'all live on Highway 180, Fort Morgan Highway? You did? How far down from 59?
Well, I'm actually in Wedgewood, Bear Creek, so.
How far is that? Off of 59, how far down on Highway 180 do you live?
Two miles.
Two miles. Okay, so nobody really lives past Brigadoon Trail. On Saturday of this week at 11 o'clock, the traffic from 59 to, going back toward Brigadoon Trail, where we're talking about the construction, the traffic was blocked, backed up completely to Mo's Landing at 11 o'clock. Do you know how many miles that is? We cannot, it's affecting our quality of life, the traffic on Highway 180 currently, currently, not, not adding 65 more houses that we can't stand to have because of the safety issues on this highway. That little left-hand turn that y'all are gonna do, that will help coming down to when you wanna turn left. But all the traffic that's coming, you won't be able to go back east. You can't. It's a, it is a disaster now. I can't imagine what the traffic is gonna be like come July. It's already a disaster. Our quality of life has been affected already from building all those houses out there on the north side of Highway 180. It's unbelievable, and they're not complete. And you're gonna add 65 more? Show us today that you care about our quality, and not only our quality of life, the safety issues. It is unbelievable, the traffic that's out there now and cars turning out in front of you that are trying to get out, because at one point, I can, I have sat there and counted 90 cars consecutively coming from the west end of Highway 180. 90 cars just sat there. I couldn't get down to Dollar General to get the milk that went in, and then trying to come back out of Dollar General, it's the same situation. It, it just needs to stop until the traffic is addressed on Highway 180. It's either four-laned or whatever needs to be done, and I know that's a state highway, but you know what? That's what you tell the planning people that buy these land, this land that want to develop, they can go to the state and they can get that highway four-laned. That's either your responsibility or theirs or both before you build. Do not build any more subdivisions on Highway 180 until the traffic is addressed. It's just wrong. It's absolutely wrong. So stand up for us and show us that you're gonna do the right thing and deny this. It's wrong. And the wetlands, that's another issue in itself. When you destroy all the land around the wetlands, the wildlife is gone. Those blue herons are gone, you know? They're like pets in there. They, they, they roost in those pines. You're gonna destroy those when you go in there, and the little 17 acres that left, they're not gonna stay there. There's gonna be too much congestion there and people living around there, and I understand that, that's another issue. So please, when you vote today, do the right thing. Do not allow this. That's why it was not allowed. There's nothing really that's changed since February, not really. The left-hand turn, that'll help you getting into Brigadoon, but it ain't gonna help you getting out, and it's not gonna help you when you have to go down to Dollar General or you get gas or go to Walmart. Nobody wants to get on this road. Nobody. And, and those consultants, you know, I've handled more millions of dollars worth of consultants than all of y'all put together, I guarantee you, in my career. Those consultants need to be out there giving you the number of, did they give you the number of cars that travel on Highway 180 per day on average and how it elevates during the holiday seasons, what the number is? And what's the number that's too many that's considered to be a safety issue? Did they give you all that?
That was in the traffic study, yes, sir.
So how, what's the number?
I'd have to get their traffic study out and look at it.
Now, what's the number? You should know that because that's so critical with this.
It's probably a couple hundred-page document I'd have to review that.
Couple hundred per hour, day, or what?
No, no, I'm talking about the documents, maybe 100 pages. I don't have that in front of me, sir.
But that being one of the pages to us is most important. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody else would like to talk on this, please?
My name is Robert Sorels. I live at 17952 Highway 180, and I agree with a lot of what Mr. Finley said, and I'm really not opposed to development on Fort Morgan Road. I moved there in 2008. The guys and ladies, the traffic's doubled on Fort Morgan Road. It's not necessarily the development, it's the safety on Fort Morgan Road. I need a left-hand turn lane to get in my house. Fallon probably does, too. I've almost been rear-ended numerous times. Like Mr. Finley said, you know, in the wintertime, it's not that bad down on Fort Morgan Road, but in the summertime, checkout time at 10:30, check-in time at 3:00 in the afternoon. There's so much development on Fort Morgan Road that what we hope is residents of this town, that you guys will address is the road itself. I know from what I understand, ALDOT does not control the entire stretch, maybe Conservation Department has some of it, I don't know, but is a center lane for the entire road of Fort Morgan Road or Highway 180, is that a possibility? You know, when D.R. Horton built their subdivision, there's a left-hand turn lane for it. Adams Homes has got a subdivision going up down the road. Is there a right-hand turn going in for it? I don't know. Maybe a right-hand turn's not that important, but if you live on Fort Morgan Road or Highway 180 and you're going west and you try to turn left at the wrong time, you're looking out your rearview mirror in fear. If you're coming east and you're wanting to turn left on Fort Morgan Road, you also got your life in the hands of the people behind you. So while I'm not really opposed to the development and the subdivision, I'm concerned about Highway 180, and, you know, other than, say, 59 and not counting East Beach Boulevard, that's down along the beach, Highway 180's gotta be by far the most heavily traveled road we've got in Gulf Shores. So as you guys are looking at it, anything that y'all can do to help us residents that live on that road, because it's changed a lot just in the last eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to approach the?
First, I'm Tom Everly. I live on 414 Sunset Drive on Little Lagoon. First question I have is, where's the sewage going for this development?
Assuming Gulf Shores, I'm assuming Gulf Shores Utilities.
Yeah, I go to Gulf Shores, Gulf Shores Utilities, yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing, talking about the traffic, I come out of Upon Drive and try to turn left on the Fort Morgan Road with my boat, and you talk about scary. It is scary. People try to let you go that are coming to the east, and you don't know what's coming from the east, and, you know, they're waving you on, and I'm not going, and I'll sit there. I mean, I dread coming to that stop sign with my boat, especially trying to go to Mo's Landing. So anyway, quality of life is a big issue. So sewage is going to Gulf Shores Utilities. Is there any concern with the aquifer below this development, the water below the development? Is there gonna be any sprinkler systems, anything along those lines in this development? Even for your yard? Yes, sir. I would suggest testing that water first, particularly forever chemicals. We do know. No, I'm talking about the aquifer. I'm talking about, okay, there won't be any wells, no sprinkler systems for the yards? Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
I'm Wayne Jones. I live on Brigadoon Trail. Part of the thing, I know the traffic, you know, is terrible there. A left-hand turn lane, that's really not gonna help much, because you see, you got one, you got one now, really, you're just doing it from over here. You're gonna be a little bit closer, but the way you cut across there is what's dangerous. You need, we need help on the right hand, getting out on the right, and then especially on the left, but that's not gonna do a lot. The, as far as the development, this doesn't seem much different than what you passed on in February, am I right? um, you passed on in February, am I right?
It's a different application, um, different design. It's...
Okay, basically.
It's, it's a similar number, similar number of lots, but, uh, it is, it's different.
Okay, okay, yeah. Well, I mean, I think that some of the things that it was turned down far before still exist, and traffic's a big one. The problems, you know, the wetlands have pretty much, uh, I'd say been three-quarters destroyed already, so I don't know what's gonna happen now. But even after we, uh, you stopped the one back in February, within three or four weeks, they were back there filling in again. So, um, I think everything really, you know, people need to put eyes on it and really concentrate on the traffic because it is dangerous trying to pull in and out of there. And, um, if I could, if they could put a left-hand turn lane with light, that might help. It would help, and I think you're gonna have to do that at some point. I know that's a whole nother ball of wax, but, you know, but that is the problem. I think the biggest problem is the, uh, traffic. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Susan Bradshaw. I live at one six four nine seven Brigadoon Trail. Um, I live right next door to those lots that you're proposing. I've lived there for twenty-one years, and aside from the traffic and aside from, you know, the wetlands being slowly deteriorated every single day, I have a serious problem with the drainage. Those lots next to me are wet, soaking wet. I walk my dogs past them every day. There's never a day that I walk by, there isn't water sitting on those lots. So although those houses look really beautiful, what are they gonna sit on? And then how much dirt are you gonna bring in that's just gonna make my lot even wetter because I'll be lower than you? I've got a picture right here. This is my lot. Can I walk up and show you?
Sure, sure.
My backyard after, on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. That's my backyard. Now, the line from the wetlands goes diagonal toward the road into those other three lots. So I guess I'm confused, where's the water gonna go? Not only that, um, I mean, how much dirt are they gonna have to bring in? And then what is that gonna do to my neighbors' yards? Where, I mean, where's it gonna go? And of course, I'm concerned about the traffic issue too. I mean, I was actually rear-ended turning into Middle Brigadoon. That was eleven years ago, so I can't even imagine how scary it would be now with the multitude of traffic that's going down there every single day. So I just, the last time this was approved, back in what, two thousand nineteen, eighteen, whatever it was, they were supposed to submit a drainage plan to all of us that lived within seven hundred and fifty feet, and we never saw anything. So I'm just confused. This looks like the same exact thing, except we're adding more lots. So, anyway, I think it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Laurie Everly. Tom's my husband. He talked about how scary it is driving the boat to Mo's. When we get there and launch, he gets out and goes in the boat. I get to drive the trailer home. Imagine that. It's long, it's scary, it's not good with all the traffic coming both directions. And I just have one thing for you to think about. Sixty-five homes, how many school kids is that gonna be? And are you comfortable with the school bus going in and out of that twice a day, every day with our kids on it? Please think about that.
Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Fulford.
Yes, Mr. Fulford.
Built the house in nineteen sixty-eight on Brigadoon Trail. Been there through a lot of hurricanes. Those three houses, these fellows wanting to build right down Brigadoon Trail. Tell them I'm gonna tell you, this is wetland. They come through there years ago, the, the government did, and they put signs up there classifying that as wetland. I don't know who took the signs down or what, but I just want to let you know, that is wetland. I've waited through it many a time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Henderson. I live at sixteen five oh eight Brigadoon Trails. And, uh, first of all, the young lady that just appeared and spoke to you in the green shirt, I want to, uh, state that, uh, she's absolutely correct. I live right across the street from her. Uh, I wonder, with all those lots being considered, these three lots that are actually on Brigadoon Trails and the water problem they have, have they've all been considered? Yeah, I, I consider those wetlands for sure. And have they been dealt with separately than thrown in the pile with everything else? I, I think there ought to be a question, has those three lots where they're just kinda off to the side, have they really been studied? Just a, just a question. I don't know the answer to that. The other thing is that was brought out today was the, uh, the South Alabama Trust. Now, I know nothing about, about them, but it's been inferred that they're looking at this. And then there was a letter. Well, we haven't seen any letter. Are they taking it over? Are they going, have they done any studies? And what, other than it sounds good, what are, what are their purpose? What, you know, are they gonna monitor what's being done? I have no idea. So my question to you is, what commitment have they made? And have they done their studies to make sure the wetlands are being complied with? And then the traffic issue, of course, I agree with everybody since, but to me, the, your big traffic issue is gonna be Fort Morgan Road and fifty-nine. That's where I have, have problems, and that's where you're gonna have more problems. I know you tried to put a stoplight up there on one eighty and then make widened road and do some turn stuff, but there's still, there's a two-turn lane. I've, I've come up to be two miles out and have to go through that stoplight two or three times before I get to that turn lane. And the more people you add, it's just gonna make it worse. You know? I, I don't know what the answer is, and then that, and that's gonna be a separate issue. The more people, they just, everybody's gotta go through that intersection, you know, or they're cutting down the side streets. So, uh, those are the questions I have. Uh, I would like to know a little bit more about this wetland status, the Southern Trust, and the three-lot situation. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
I can answer, uh, a couple of those questions so that... It's a very good question about the three lot, three southern lots, because they are not part of the remainder of the subdivision. Those are kind of outliers that are, um, gonna be on, uh, Brigadoon Trail. So a portion of that R1, uh, four property is wetlands, but none of the lots that are proposed are, there's no wetlands on those lots, and those, well, those lots are buffered from the wetlands by thirty feet. Um, in terms of South Alabama Land Trust, um, by understanding they're a conservation type of business and they preserve land or get land that's donated to them, they preserve it in perpetuity. I have not reviewed the letter that was just, just presented, but we do have a letter in our file from the South Alabama Land Trust stating that they are looking at this property and reviewing it to see if they will take it on as a, basically a conservation easement to preserve the wetlands in perpetuity. Basically, so they, you know, nothing can happen to them, they'll remain wetlands in their natural state. Um, in terms of drainage on the three lots, obviously the overall drainage plan does not cover those three lots, and Jenny can jump in if she needs to, but at the time of building permit, it's a requirement of the building permit application process to submit a drainage plan. That's reviewed by the engineering department to make sure that any fill or anything that's brought in does not negatively impact the neighboring properties. And those are reviewed on a case-by-case basis at the time of building permit.
Well, I'd, I'd a lot like to take a moment and, and we're, all of us here, we all live here, and we're very much aware of the traffic and County Road six is same situation. Um, uh, I, I live on West Beach. It's getting, it's getting worse and worse. And we, as a planning commission, uh, we're, our job is to make sure that the property is, the people can develop their property, um, to, to its highest and best use, as long as it meets all, all the guidelines. We can sit up here and turn everything down, and then we'll be in court. So our situation is, ALDOT is our problem here. Now, the Department of Transportation is people we need to get, and I'm sure the mayor's, is always discussing trying to get, uh, Fort Morgan. I mean, we need to look a way to enhance and deal with the traffic situation, but we know on the roads. Does ALDOT, in ALDOT, control the entire, the entire roadway?
Yes, sir. State Highway one eighty west is a roadway controlled by ALDOT.
And attempts have been made to get them to do this, and they're, and they've said us that, they tell us that we've got other roads in the state of Alabama that need more work than, than Fort Morgan. It had to reach the, I mean, that's what we get from ALDOT. They tell us that, well, you know, we've got other roads in the, in the state that are, that need more lanes than y'all do. So that's, that's, that's the problem we're having with, with the, with the state. We completely understand what you're talking about, and, and we feel your pain, trust me.
I understand what you're saying, ALDOT, uh, power ties and where the money's gonna go, what roads are gonna be built?
Yes, sir.
Yeah? That falls back there. Let's wait until it's our turn and get the roads, and then you go build. I have no problem with that. Let's wait. We get the roads and it be safe, then it's time for y'all to come build.
I just want y'all to, I, I want y'all to know for the people that don't know how this stuff works down here, I want everybody to understand that, you know? It, it is up to me. I four-laned Fort Morgan, but it's not up to me.
We have to wait.
You know?
Wait on ALDOT.
So, so do we keep, do we keep our, you know, do we keep our, uh, area shut down? Put moratoriums and no more building until the roads are fixed?
Until the roads are, that's well, that's, yeah.
I know, I know, I'm up to can of worms now, but anyway. Yep.
I, I, I will say, we have had a conversation with ALDOT about making improvements to Fort Morgan Road. First response was it, uh, it was not on their list, but they would, uh, were open to discussions. What they mentioned was a third lane, turn lane, but I don't know who made the comment, but, uh, third lane doesn't stop the flow, uh, from the east, uh, eastbound lane or the westbound lane. So on these heavy weekends, that's not gonna solve a problem. It, it's gonna take...
So I can wait. That's right, this way.
You don't forget, they have a bike...
Come on up, ma'am. Come out to the front, please.
Tammy Kent. I live at one six oh five oh Brigadoon Trail. Those bike lanes that they have on both sides of those streets, you have bicyclists going out to the fort and back constantly, a caravan of them. You're swerving over a half a foot or two feet to miss them. They're swerving over from this side, and you have head-on collisions almost constantly. And then at night, they love to use it as a drag strip to go after you get down off, probably past, um, Peninsula, then all they do is drag race up and down. We just can't have any more things. What if an emergency? How do people get out? It's not like we have another way to go, like on West Beach. You're stuck. I say a moratorium when I'll, put the pressure on ALDOT. Put it on them. If enough people bitch, they'll get it done.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Okay.
Can you tell us more about the, um, the Land Trust, the South Alabama thing?
We can get you more information. Can we get some information from the Land Trust, guys? Get this lady some information on the Land Trust for me? Okay.
Yeah, let me, I'll explain it a little bit more. So it's, South Alabama Land Trust is not the only land trust that does this sort of thing, but it could be them or some of the others that are there. But basically, they are an entity that would accept this property with a, um, an endowment to, uh, help them maintain this property in perpetuity. And that means they're gonna go out there and expect it on some kind of frequency that determine if the boundaries have changed, that there needs, needs to be corrections to help keep those boundaries where they are. They're gonna go in there in some frequency and, um, uh, like they do with the state park, they might, they might have to, uh, do some vegetation control. So this won't be any different than the state land, state park, except this is a private entity that is set up that will handle it forever.
Cut the grass and plant...
That's right.
New grass if needed, and that, that what you're saying?
Right. They will be responsible. They'll, they'll be the ones that have the property and are the ones that are maintaining it. It's not anyone that would be here today that might leave tomorrow, that they're gonna, they're gonna be responsible forever.
Okay.
And they'll also have to comply with our wetland protection regulations, which have some, uh, criteria in there, what can and can't be done within the wetlands, but it's basically nothing can be done in a wetland, so...
I'll make one more comment about our conversation with ALDOT. When that conversation was going on, they were negotiating the purchase of the toll bridge. They were in the battle with everybody about the third bridge coming over the intercoastal. So all their priorities then were focused on that. I do believe we have an opportunity for another conversation with ALDOT now that may get us more than a third lane and have some real conversation about a commitment. I get the traffic, I see it, we live it. While I don't live on Fort Morgan and I don't live on West Beach and I don't live in craft farms, I travel all those roads too. So, uh, we don't necessarily have to live there to understand the problem. Uh, but, you know, we talked about this last time when we approved the subdivision across the street. We did have a conversation with ALDOT at that time. Uh, but I do think it's worthy of a, needing a commitment from ALDOT, uh, at least to know that the, the funding and the project can get committed and have that other conversation before we, um, add, add more to that problem. Just my, my thing.
Would, would it behoove us to get the, the mayor, the mayor and the council, Andy, uh, together to, uh, approach ALDOT? With the mayor and the council approaching them, they, they would be the ones to, to contact ALDOT, correct?
It would be better coming from the mayor than from myself, yes, sir.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, but it's up to the mayor.
That's right. I mean, I don't, I don't make those, those determin, those decisions, um, in my job.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be fluke, but I'm just saying, yeah, it's, it's the mayor that needs to do something to help you with this, I would think.
City council and mayor obviously can have a bigger impact in, in that, or make that decision, um, and have a bigger impact than I can.
All right. I'm, yes, ma'am.
Wind this up here for a minute.
I live on Brigadoon Trail, and I'm right down the road from the girl in the green shirt. I am covered with wetlands all around my property. I bought it that way for a reason. I didn't want anybody building beside me. But Sandy came through and flooded. We didn't get it from across the road. We got it from the wetlands. You're gonna put sixty-four houses in there, and that's gonna drain into those ponds, then into the wetlands. That's gonna be a disaster, 'cause we're not gonna have to worry about it coming from the ocean, we're gonna have to worry about it coming from our backyard. And God forbid, the, the wildlife that we have found since we've been there that is just diminishing off those wetlands is ridiculous. Nobody's caring about any of it. Our subdivision that was built into there was supposed to have walking trails back through those things and, and given to the state that have never been taken care of, never been ever groomed, and it's just let it go. So you're trying to tell us you're not gonna let this go too, and nobody pays attention and watches what's happening in these wetlands? 'Cause you're not watching it now. There's all kinds of, from Middle Brigadoon down Brigadoon Trail, there are all kinds of walking trails in there that have not been taken care of by Jason. And he is the builder that's been out there all this time, Baker Clark Homes, and they're not being taken care of. So how are we supposed to believe that you're gonna take care of them now? And that's my backyard.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We'll shut it down. Ma'am, can we close the public hearing, please? Yes.
Any of these?
Uh, yes, sir. Sure, sure.
Just a couple of them.
Yes, go ahead. I understand. Kinda getting kinda lengthy here. Go ahead.
I understand. I'll be short.
Okay.
Um, I'm John Bennett. I'm part of the team, uh, coming in to try to, I would say, redevelop. The property's already been developed, actually, we're not, and then we're actually reducing the footprint that, that was there. We've had a significant, um, wetland delineation study done across...
We've had a significant wetland delineation study done across the entire property, and due to federal guidelines, we lost, the 79 lots were reduced in part because of that. The buffers between any buildable area and the wetland has expanded, and that's been incorporated into the plan as well. So, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to put that out there, that that has been done. We are not building on and doing anything outside of any area that wasn't already part of a project that was gonna be built on. And that's really the primary part. Then the land trust component, we have received a letter from them signed by their president saying that they will accept the property to their land trust. And they do have guidelines that require funds to be put in perpetuity to maintain the property as a wetland, as it is. So, those are the two points I wanted to make that have been talked about quite a bit. You know, the traffic portion, we first went in and did what ALDOT told us we had to do according to the traffic study that was done. We then chose to extend that further, to make our best effort as a good citizen to help provide for safety that we could within our ability there. So, we are addressing all those issues in this project, and we're really just bringing something back that's been sitting there for a long time and cleaning up something that's been a little bit of a mess. So, with that, those are the three points I wanted to make, and thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I will open up the chair for a motion on water oaks conservation.
I wanna make two more comments. I know you're ready to be done, but there's three main issues, traffic, wetlands, drainage. The wetlands, just to put it out there, we require a wetland delineation study that's provided by a licensed engineering environmental firm. We do check that. We have an additional wetland ordinance on our books that is more restrictive than ADM and the Corps and everybody that regulates it. Thirty-foot buffer's been maintained, so I think they've worked to meet the wetlands. But I go back to the traffic issue. To me, there's two issues with traffic. One is the time delays in the traffic and inconveniences, but the other is safety. And the safety is what I am concerned about with the added traffic. And so, I think we ought to look at ways to further improve the safety. It may not be a four-lane highway that may never come, it may be, but there may be some other safety improvements that can be made out there before we add more traffic to it. But I know there's a lot of questions about the wetlands. I think the box has been checked there, but I don't believe that the safety and traffic item is checked, in my opinion. Not anything to do with the developer, but it is what it is out there.
That's the main issue here, is traffic and safety. And we go through this every time somebody wants to build something here.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny the application to have a further conversation with ALDOT to get some transportation improvements committed before we approve this kind of density in that area.
Can we have a motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second? Okay. Ma'am, can you give a vote count, please? Until further.
Pete the Cactus?
Yes.
Philip Harris?
Yes.
Valen Young?
Yes.
Richard Lamar?
Yes.
Grant Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
So, motion is denied. Okay. All right.
Motion to deny was approved.
Motion to deny was approved, I'm sorry. Okay, Rex's site plans, O'Reilly's Auto Parts. That's you, Steve?
I'll give us a moment to.
We do, and that's the pressure point we need right there. They're not wrong. It's not wrong.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This agenda item is a zoning text amendment request. It's kind of a two-part request. Part of it is, well, let me back up a little bit. The city asked an outside legal counsel to review our sign ordinance and some other ordinances to ensure compliance, legal compliance. So, part of the proposed text amendment here is to ensure compliance of our signed ordinance with First Amendment and case law, and also a modification to the signed ordinance pertaining to vacation rental dwelling units. This was publicly noticed properly. So, some of the background, the United States Supreme Court decided a case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert in Arizona. It was a landmark free speech case pertaining specifically to sign regulations, and there's been some subsequent since then. This kind of resulted in cities, local jurisdictions throughout the country updating their sign ordinances. Additionally, we're also gonna look at some issues caused by the ongoing proliferation of signs on our vacation rentals throughout the city. So, Reed v. Town of Gilbert, this is a picture of Reverend Clyde Reed. Just some of the background of the case here is Good News Presbyterian rented out Gilbert Elementary School. They placed a bunch of signs out, you know, prior to services. The Town of Gilbert in Arizona had separate classifications for different types of signs. They called this a temporary directional sign. They had political signs, they had ideological signs, and then they had a lot of the, kind of the standard permanent signs. Temporary directional signs like this one had a much more limited timeframe they were allowed to be posted. They had to be smaller than other signs. So, Mr. Reed here and others, I imagine, went to court. It made its way all the way to the United States Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court basically said that if you have to read a sign to determine what kind of sign it is, whether it's ideological, political, commercial, non-commercial, that is a restriction of speech. And since the government is attempting to restrict speech, it must further a compelling government interest and must be narrowly tailored to that end. Reed v. Gilbert was a nine-to-zero unanimous decision by the US Supreme Court. So, again, that triggered cities throughout the country to update their sign ordinance, which is what we're looking at today. The second part of today's zoning text amendment request has to do with updating some specific regulations for vacation rental signage. So, this is just a spot on West Beach. I stopped, took a picture. Now, we are limited a little bit on the, just the camera resolution, but from this vantage point, I counted 17 little signs on posts that are out in front of a lot of these vacation rentals. Some are in, you know, various states of repair, some are in the right-of-way, some, you know, so they create potential for safety issues, traffic safety issues, and just visual clutter. There's an aesthetic, negative aesthetic value to these. So, let me point out, so we handed out the proposed ordinance language. What was in the packet, we've modified slightly, so we're looking at draft 5282025. I didn't intend to read through every single line of it, but I'll hit the big points, and we can discuss particular questions toward the end. So, in section 4-1, the general definitions portion of the zoning ordinance, we've updated some of the language. We defined what a banner is, what a flag is. We define what commercial messages and non-commercial messages are. One of the big reasons for that is, in fact, we don't, the city does not make a distinction between commercial or non-commercial speech. So, if we permit commercial speech on a sign, we also allow fully that non-commercial speech in the same size, shape, manner as well. We also differently define different types of signs, so directional identification, movable signs, nameplate signs, off-premise versus on-premise signs, and then vehicle signs. In the use definition section of the zoning ordinance, 4-2, we better define vacation rental dwelling unit. So, in the proposed ordinance language on page, well, starting on page two and 4-2, right now, we have dwelling unit license for vacation rental, and we have tourist rental dwelling. We've just consolidated those into vacation rental dwelling unit. Section 18-1, again, a lot of this is at the behest of outside legal counsel to ensure that we are compliant with First Amendment and various case law. So, we point out that this is narrowly tailored to achieve the interest of public safety and aesthetics. Zoning for aesthetics is a perfectly legal right of the city. These regulations do not regulate or censor speech based on content or viewpoint. Like I said earlier, signs that allow commercial content will also allow non-commercial content to the same extent or within, you know, a combination of both. And they conform to, well, I mentioned Reed v. Town of Gilbert. That was the big landmark case that basically said, again, if you have to read what's on the sign, that means you're regulating it based on this content. Can't do that anymore. City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin, Austin v. Reagan, that was a subsequent case. This dealt with billboards. Another term for a billboard is an off-premise sign. So, an off-premise sign is speaking to or advertising something that doesn't happen where the sign's located, which most billboards are. There's plenty of other off-premise signs. In this particular case, the Supreme Court held that, well, the petitioner said, well, you're reading our sign to determine that it's an off-premise sign. So, Reed v. Gilbert says you can't do that. Supreme Court said, well, that may be too extreme of interpretation. So, in this case, the reading of the sign, what it says is the sign's message matters only to the extent that it informs the sign's relative location. So, again, it's not necessarily a content regulation, it's just looking at the location of the sign and whether or not it's off or on-premise. So, we are allowed to regulate off-premise signs and on-premise. And if you look on page five of the draft, there's numerous other legal, well, I said page five, page six, numerous other legal cases that, again, outside legal counsel has reviewed to ensure that we are compliant with them. 18-2, this is the sign permit procedures. This is actually probably more of a Fifth Amendment due process requirement. Right now, the ordinance basically says you apply for a sign, staff reviews it, and that's about all. There's really no time limit on it, so we certainly wouldn't do this, but in theory, you could, you know, drag your feet and say, hey, it takes us a year to review a sign. So, this is more of a due process, a Fifth Amendment, not First Amendment issue, but it just puts a defined time limit on when sign permits can be reviewed. They can still be denied if they're not compliant, but if they are compliant, we have to give a decision with it within a month. All right, and some of the further updates, section 18-2, general sign regulations. We've redefined how some of the, again, how some of the signs are defined. I will point out, so far, until we get to the vacation rental portion, none of this text really proposes a change to what types of signs are permitted, size, time, manner, those are all remaining the same for now. These are just updating some of the language to, again, ensure compliance with the First Amendment. So, temporary signs, again, on sites that are underdeveloped, so if they have an active site plan, have an active building permit, they can have a little additional temporary signage. Eight-inch-by-36-inch sign on the building facade, that is actually, well, again, you can put your message on it, but what that is for is for your address numbers. Building code right now already requires a minimum of four-inch-tall street numbers legible from the public street. This allows that, it does put an eight-inch-tall limit on it. Nameplate signs, flags, real estate signs, directional signs, signs before election, so within a certain timeframe prior to an election, additional signs may be placed. That does not have to be a political sign or a sign related to the election, but if you want to take advantage of that prior to election, you do have a little more allowance. And then yard signs. And then just, actually, I think this probably does add a few more prohibited signs. A movable sign is what you may think of, they have the changeable copy, and they also often have, they're on wheels, and they have the incandescent lights with the big arrow pointing somewhere. That's usually what we think of a movable sign or a portable sign. A vehicle sign, that's gonna be one that's, well, painted on a vehicle or a trailer. Those in themselves aren't necessarily prohibited. However, if they are parked in a location within 50 feet of a public right-of-way for more than four consecutive days or more than 15 days in a 30-day period. So, just driving around with some kind of advertisement or sign on your vehicle is fine, but if they're parked for long periods of time, that would be prohibited. Sandwich signs, the sandwich boards that people place on sidewalks typically, and then any other temporary sign that's not specifically permitted is prohibited.
Scott, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
So, on the vehicle sign, does the vehicle not have to be lettered with the business? Or can they advertise on that vehicle a business that has nothing to do with the owner of that truck? Can they drive around with, come shop at something?
If they're just driving around, yes. We currently don't have any kind of prohibition against that. Now, if they park, you know, out in front, right on Gulf Shores Parkway, and leave it there for an extended period of time, that would be prohibited.
So, in light of all the traffic situation that we have, are we encouraging business type of development to have some sign vehicle driving around? Or would that be restricted by the business license ordinance?
That's a good question. I don't know. We can certainly, I don't know.
The reason I'm asking, there's a vehicle that's driving around town that has an LED sign on top of it, and it's advertising something. And I know in the past, we've tried real hard to eliminate any vehicles driving around town with advertising because it adds to our traffic and congestion problem, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm making sure this doesn't interfere with that, and I thought that that was not legal, but I don't know if it had our sign ordinance if it was a business license situation.
I'll certainly reach out to the business license revenue. Yes, sir.
It currently is not, currently is not legal.
Okay.
So, does this change make it legal? If that's the case, then I'd like to suggest maybe we talk about that.
My question is, how are we, how are our current regulations, does it fit most of this, or do we need major changes?
Well, if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, we can certainly look at major changes today, well, until we get to vacation rental. What I've covered so far, really, I would not call a major change. Some definitional changes, again, compliance with First Amendment, but so far, really, all we're doing is just making sure that we comply with the law.
First Amendment.
So, yeah, so far, nothing really substantive, obviously, has been proposed. But Mr. Brown's question, we will look into.
Something else, too. Let's say somebody comes in and drives, what's that, Hot Dog, Oscar Mayer? Is that legal or not legal in our town?
I would say, as far as zoning ordinance goes, it's not prohibited. I, I would say as far as zoning ordinance goes, it's not prohibited. Now, like I said, you start, you start.
You just can't park the hot dog on the side of the road for these.
For more than four days.
I'm just curious, does that mean our, yeah, does that mean our code? Okay.
I, I saw some of those at the, the race this weekend. And of course, you know, you start looking at traffic laws and, and like Grant said, the business license. So, so there's more than just zoning that may regulate that, but we, we can certainly look into it. Oh, yes, sir. All right, so, so really, the significant or, or most noticeable change would be in section six eighteen, the vacation rental dwelling units. So it starts off with stating where they are allowed. So they are allowed within the single-family and duplex vacation rental overlay district, which they are today, and I have a map just to show where that is. Within BN, neighborhood business, BG, general business, BT, tourist business, then the ICW North and South districts. Also may be permitted in multifamily uses that are designated for such within PUDs, which of course, planning commission would see. And then the council may approve individual units and multifamily developments located within R three and R four through the conditional use permit process. And then they're specifically prohibited in AG, ATP, ED, IND, open space, R one, R two, R three, R four, and R five, as well as in single-family subdivisions in PUDs. Here's a map, just a little reminder of, of where that single-family and duplex vacation rental overlay district exists. So it's mostly all the area along West Beach and, and Wesley Lane that's already zoned, R one, R two, and some BT, and then up off of Highway one eighty that's mostly zoned R one, single-family. And, and just point out, that's not changing, that's the existing overlay. So the signage section, again, this is the one, this is the attempt to maybe rein in some of the extra signage we've been seeing out there for some time. And I've got some graphics at the end of this that may or may not help. So let me see what, where we are in the proposed ordinance. Six eighteen, I'm sorry. Starting on page three. So on a vacation rental dwelling unit, what it states is these are the only signage that would be allowed in, on a site that has a vacation rental dwelling unit. They shall display an address and character. So again, this is kind of a prescriptive. Building code R requires a minimum of four inches and legible from the public street, and this would limit it to eight inches in height and thirty-six inches long. If it's a Gulf side lot, also there's separate city code, code ordinances that require addressing on the, on the Gulf side as well. One, what we call an identification sign mounted flat on the front facade, and it may not be directly illuminated or internally illuminated. That's limited at six feet, six square feet, rather. So, so, you know, two feet by three feet or, or some combination of that. One nameplate sign may be mounted flat on the front facade, which is a two-square foot, so one by two or something similar. Gulf front lots are allowed a fence or detached sign on each side of the principal building. Now, that's, that's limited to sixty square inches. To put that into some context, a sheet of notebook paper, an eight and a half by eleven sheet of notebook paper is ninety-five or ninety-three and a half square inches. So, so that's a very small, that's square inches, again, not square feet. So six inch by ten inch sign is what we're talking about there. And then real estate sign when it's for sale. The prohibited signs would be what we call a snipe or window sign. A snipe sign is the, these that you see that are, don't see many around here, thankfully, but you'll see them places, it'll be like We Buy Ugly Houses, and they put it on the side of utility pole, or Puppies for Sale. It's those kinds, that kind of appear on utility poles or, or places where they probably shouldn't be. We call those snipe signs, so they're already prohibited, but they're specifically prohibited here and signs and windows. Then any other detached sign are prohibited. So please don't allow the quality of our graphics, my graphics, to, to distract from the presentation, but hopefully it tells the story well enough graphically. So this is a typical vacation rental dwelling unit. So the address number sign, again, it displays the address number on the front facade and on the Gulf side if it's a Gulf-sized lot. No more than eight inches tall and thirty-six inches wide. An identification sign, again, has to be flat, flush against the facade. It cannot be a freestanding, like a pole sign or something, and it cannot be any more than six square feet. A nameplate sign, no more than two square feet mounted flat on the front facade. These are those fence detached signs that all apply to Gulf side properties. Sixty square inches, which is less than a half a square foot each on the, on the east and west sides, if so desired. Cannot be more than three feet tall and have to be at least fifteen feet from the street line or the front property line.
Scott, can I stop you there for a minute?
Yes, sir.
What? Why the detached on the Gulf side? What's the?
Well, a, a, again, we're not regulating the content of what these signs say, but the, I believe the idea there is if you wanted to say no public access, no trespassing, no parking, that's the idea there. You can, you can have a very small sign kind of out front that, that would discourage people from, you know, just passing through your property thinking it was a public access.
Okay.
Again, you can really put kind of any kind of message you want on there, but that's, that's kind of the idea is if someone desired to do that, they would have the opportunity. And then if, if it's, the site is for sale, it would be allowed, a, a real estate sign as allowed elsewhere in the city for properties under developed, single-family or duplex, no more than six square feet and no more than six feet tall. And there's all of them. They wanted to max out everything, that's, that's potentially what they could have.
So what happens, this is a perfect example, when it's a duplex and there's two rentals in one building? And they're rented by two separate companies?
It's per property, so if it's, if it's a, they get what's on the screen there, so.
Per side.
Per property, per parcel, so.
But there's, there's a, this is, this is a perfect example right here.
Two owners.
Two owners own this, this duplex. The right is rented by ABC Vacation Rentals and other ones, one, two, three Vacation Rentals. How do you differentiate who does what?
Again, they, they can choose the message they put on the sign. They could use their nameplate sign for something, they could use the identification sign for something. So, I mean, they're, we're, we're not saying these are the messages you had to put on these signs. Again, those are probably the more common ones that they may do.
But if you can only get one identification sign, you need two.
You could potentially, you could do identification sign with, you know, on this example, it says waterfront rental agency, that the nameplate sign could then say Beach Rental Agency, or, or again, whatever it wanted. And again, and this is proposed text. Planning Commission can certainly propose. I mean, this is the time, this is what we're doing here, is, is proposing potential changes.
Difficult.
Could the sign ordinance be tied to business license? If there's a duplex and each side of the duplex has a separate business license, could they each qualify for a sign of some sort?
I, I think it could be written that way.
Yeah, it has to be. Got two different owners, two different management companies. You can just put one sign up, and you'd be wanting to differentiate. Side A rents for this, side B rents for this, that's what he's talking about, right?
Yes, and I don't know if, you have to, I'm a little bit ignorant when it comes to real estate, is if you, can you own half a duplex, or do you just, you can just rent half a duplex?
You don't have to.
So can you tie it to ownership, a deed, maybe, instead of a business license? I don't know.
Most duplexes are kind of minimized, and one person on to one side of, it is, it's one person on.
There's tons of marketing associated with nameplates and house names, and having one nameplate on a duplex for sure won't, won't fix that. I mean, that's not going to help at all. I would almost eliminate the fence detached signs and declutter everything.
Does nine-one-one require a, an A and a B on a dwelling also? So you'd have forty-five hundred A would be left side and forty-five hundred B would be the right side? So you'd almost need to have two identifier address signs, too.
I think each dwelling unit should be entitled to the same signage.
Correct.
We can make that change.
Certainly.
I'll make the motion on this.
Yeah, and we, we can, if it's the desire of the planning commission to postpone till next month to, to let us, you know, kind of flesh that a little bit more, that's fine.
You're hitting us with wise stuff.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And I will point out, I think you know this, but for everybody, this is similar to a rezoning request. So planning commissioner hears it first, makes a recommendation in council, then council, you know, does, does what they do, so. But, but against, certainly the, give, give me all the feedback you can, and, and if, if it's your desire to postpone to next month and we can, we can work on it, that's, that's fine as well. We, we do want to bring our ordinance into compliance, but I mean, we.
Don't need to do it today.
It doesn't have to happen today, yeah. Reed was decided in twenty fifteen, so we.
I do like the fact that reducing the clutter from the detached signs in the front yards or the north side of, if you're driving down Beach Highway, fronting Beach Highway, it can get really distracting, it's disservice to people because they're having to see so much. And so to have these, you know, uniform location, I think will actually help people. I do think that there's going to be some pain with the transition over from some existing signage that's either graphically represented on the home or, you know, artistically put on the home, which will be considered a sign, I would assume, so that will have to, you know, be part of this, too.
Well, let me, got a couple more slides just for discussion, so it's good what we're doing this. In section six eighteen F ten, we kind of left this, this open. So on and after whatever date is decided, any violation of the subsection is a violation of the ordinance and is grounds to deny renewal of business license. It, it's been suggested, I think there's some history in the past of a, of a three-year timeframe. So twenty, twenty twenty-eight, it's three years out. But again, I, I wanted the planning commission to provide some feedback on that. So I don't know if this is more of something immediate or, or more immediate than three years out? Yes, sir.
Is that an enforce, I mean, is that a start date for enforcement? Is that really what that is?
Essentially, yes, sir, yes, sir. Well, well, yes, it would be no new ones, no new signs. Now, that will, that will be a challenge for us to, to figure out, but no new signs could be permitted or allowed, that would be in violation, but existing signs could remain until the decided upon date. And then after that date, it would be a violation, we could start doing code enforcement or withhold renewal of, of a business license.
I think three years would be, personally, my comment on that. I think three years would be a little much on that. And I think you're opening yourself up for a code enforcement nightmare if we don't make it across the board. Because now you gotta, I mean, you're documenting every house somebody's driving by versus them being able to enforce it by driving by and seeing it happen. So we would have to factor in that timeframe. But I think I definitely feel we probably need to discuss this a little bit more before we vote on it and get a little bit in, input possibly from some of our other real estate companies, management companies. And, you know, we definitely want to help with the situation, but I do agree, we definitely need to rein it in.
Yes, sir.
And this looks good, but we just may need to add an additional sign for each side or maybe even make it where they're compliant, they're all the same size versus going in and multi, giving them the freedom to do multiple different styles.
God, I'd like to take this time now and open up the, open up the thing to, if anybody in the crowd wants to talk about this. Anybody want to make, make any questions about signage?
Yes, sir.
Glenn Kaiser, Kaiser Vacation Rentals, can you go back up to your slide that showed the location of the signs, please? That one? Exactly what we were talking about, again, when you've got a duplex with separate owners, separate dwellings and so forth, you're going to have to definitely take that in consideration. So to clarify for me, the identif, identification sign would be replacing the vacation rental signs that you see along the beach now.
They, they could be used for that, yes, sir.
I'm getting the impression that, that that's the vacation rental sign, and if it happens to be for sale, then you could have the for sale sign. Or is that also available for vacation rental signs?
Well, if it's for sale, you, you would be allowed that real estate sign, the square, six-square-foot real estate sign. That's if it's for sale. At all times, you would be allowed the identification sign.
The ID sign has to be on the building.
So the vacation rental sign has to be on, on, on the building?
Yes, sir, essentially, yes, sir.
I'm necessarily against that.
Well, Leonard, so with the, with the Supreme Court ruling, we can't say what's on that sign. So it could be, if you want your nameplate to be, you know, six square feet is currently how he's got this, and you want, you know, whatever, it can be whatever you want on there, we're just trying to deal with the clutter.
Our existing signs, it's got to be the same information that's on that sign. Six square feet is pretty limited. It's not necessarily what the public is looking for when they're driving by to see if they're interested in that home, but you got some more discussion to do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. What, what are the signs that we're putting out now by the street? How, what are the size of those rental signs that y'all use?
You have numerous ones out there that are not in compliance.
They're all over the place.
Way larger than they're supposed to be.
They're huge.
I was going to go back to the picture.
I mean, does a typical sign fit in that two-by-three box, though? No? Well, your signs are too big. How big are y'all's signs? I'll call Leonard.
Here's. And, and this is back at the picture, I, I didn't measure these. Now, some, some of them are probably far below six square feet.
I'm sorry, I need to make one more comment. In the first picture, we had seventeen signs there. Those seventeen signs have generated a lot of revenue for the city.
The reading of the ordinance, right now, you can get a six-square-foot real estate sign, which is also for lease and things of that nature, but they're exempt from being permitted, so that in itself is a little bit of a challenge for enforcement because we don't require any permits. So it's up to our code enforcement officer to draw down the rules. See them.
Anybody else want to address this? I'm going to close the public hearing. And do we want to do a delaying motion, or what do we want to do here?
Yeah, I'll move that we suspend this, or table this discussion or whatever the appropriate action is until the next planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you for your presentation.
Oh, yes, sir, if I, if I can, just real quickly, I, I wanted to point out why we, we gave you an updated draft. Page four, letter C, we, there was some language in the, in the original draft for permitting taxation. We, we ran that by the revenue department just to make sure it worked with what their regulations were. So that was the purpose of the, of the recent draft, but they're okay with language now. So I just want to get that in there. Any other feedback, please let us know, and, and we will incorporate that and bring it back next month. So thank you, this is good.
Scott, I know it's on the planning commission, and then it'll be advertised, and it'll go to council for two meetings and public hearings.
Scott, I know it's on the planning commission and then it'll be advertised and it'll go to council for two meetings and public hearings, but I mean, what we've heard from real estate professionals sitting up here and in the audience, it's more valuable input than, I think the majority of us want to see this corridor look nicer and clean it up. I mean, we've done a lot to clean up the beach with leave only footprints and now the trash issue, but we we drive through our cluttered garage to get to the beach, but I think the input from the real estate world, if we could directly recruit that input, may help us a lot in get striking this balance of how do we clean up that corridor and still be effective marketing people?
Yes, sir, I agree. Yeah, this is a great part of the process to.
I just don't want those folks not to get here to the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks for y'all's input. Before I move on to O'Reilly Auto Parts, our last site plan, I would like to to introduce Dr. Mary Long. And.
Welcome.
Mr. Jason Holt, sitting down in the audience. They are new members of our commission. They want to thank you all for coming today and we're. We have one more, one more site plan. Mr. Bauer.
Okay.
O'Reilly Auto Parts.
I can get through this. Okay, that's the last item on the agenda, ZA 2467, the site plan application for a new O'Reilly Auto Parts store. The applicant seeks approval for a site plan for a 74, 7,453 square foot building on Lot 1A of the resubdivision of Lot 1 Oaks at 8 subdivision. This property is located just north of the Cumberland Farms slash Burger King convenience store and gas station at the corner of State Highway 59 and Coastal Gateway Boulevard. Here are the location maps. I believe all of you are aware of this location. It came before you, I think, back in March to subdivide the property here into three lots that has not been recorded yet, so that's why it's shown as one big parcel. This is actually Lot 1A of that subdivision. Zone general business, auto parts stores allowed by right in the general business zoning district. Here's some site photos. It's currently a wooded site. Underbrush of the site is kept clean. So there's the specific location, again, zone general business, it's allowed by rights. Proposed site plan complies with all the BG area and dimensional requirements as well as the zoning ordinance regulations. It'll be a one-story building. It complies with the maximum building coverage and pervious coverage standards. It's a setback significantly more than the minimum front rear setbacks and complies with the side yard setbacks. Proposes 60% landscape space, the minimum standard is 20%. And then they propose 22 parking spaces, which is greater than the 18 parking spaces required. So on the diagram, the site will be oriented towards State Highway 59. Parking will be in front of the building. It doesn't show the retention area, but it'll be in the rear of the building. It'll be access from, an existing access that goes to Cumberland Farms as well as a proposed access, which will be built by O'Reilly Auto Parts in the rear of the property. It's not shown on the site plan. Building architecture will be a typical O'Reilly Auto Parts store, painted in their color scheme. It's worth noting that on the, let's see, the southern and northern elevations, they're providing windows to enhance the architectural on those sides of the building. Those are not required by our ordinance. So they are going above and beyond in terms of the architectural on the sides of the building. Of course, the front of the building will have windows and entrance will be located there. It does comply with the minimum standard or minimum architectural standards of the zoning ordinance. Here is the diagram showing the vehicular vehicular access. The southern access will be provided to an existing private drive which goes, which services Cumberland Farms. The eastern access road will be built as part of this development and will, and the applicant will not receive a C of O until that roadway is developed. That roadway will continue on the, on into the future and service the other two lots of the subdivision. No new curb cuts are provided on State Highway 59. Pedestrian access, there is a sidewalk running the length of the front of the building as well as down the side of the building and will connect to that existing private drive and potentially can connect to off-site sidewalk improvements. There's a bike rack shown, see, right to the, I didn't highlight it, but there's a bike rack shown there with the space to accommodate, I believe, four bicycles. And then the applicant will be paying a $14,819 fee in lieu of constructing the required sidewalk along State Highway 59. Parking, again, it complies with the minimum parking standards. There are 22 spaces provided, only 18 are required. It's a two-way drive aisle parking lot with 90-degree angled parking. Wheel stops and balers protect the parking that is located next to the building from encroaching into the sidewalk. The parking lot meets the area and dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. Landscaping, landscape plan has been provided, and as you can see, it's heavily landscaped. The perimeter landscaping is in compliance with the city zoning ordinance, the required landscaping along State Highway 59 complies with the zoning ordinance. And then there is a Class B buffer required between the existing single-family houses and the proposed auto parts store on the eastern side of this development. And that Class B buffer has been provided and will help, the Class B buffers kind of over and above our typical perimeter landscape requirements and will help screen the existing houses from this development. They have saved seven trees ranging in size from 12 inches to 21 inches. So they are doing a good job about preserving any trees that are outside the improved area of the site. Grading and drainage, the grading and drainage plans have been reviewed and approved by the city engineering department. The property drains from the south to the north. Detention will be provided per the local requirements and will provide enough stores to attenuate the 10 and 100-year storm events. Other standards for approval, exterior lighting, they are providing five pole-mounted lights in the parking lot and five building-mounted wall scotch lights. All of those fixtures are full cutoff fixtures as required by the zoning ordinance. The dumpster is located to the rear of the property. It's screened as required by the zoning ordinance, and we have received a letter from Republic Services indicating that they will service the dumpster. And the fire marshal and engineering department have reviewed and approved the site plan. So subsequent to the staff report going out on Friday, the applicant has submitted some revised plans addressing several of the staff's comments, so anything that struck through has been addressed. The other items still are still are part of the conditions of approval. So staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The applicant shall pay a sidewalk fee of $14,819 prior to the issuance of building permit. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the plan for resubdivision of Lot 1 Oaks at 8 subdivision shall be recorded. They're ready to record that, but we're, we've been holding off allowing them to record it until this gets approved, just in case there are any changes required by the planning commission. The next condition, prior to the issuance of building permit, the following comments shall be addressed from the engineering department. A, B, C, and D have been addressed. So E remains, the drainage plans shall be updated to address the comments about inlet C5, C7 curb cut, and the site grading near the eastern property line. I believe those are addressed in the updated plans, but the city engineer has not reviewed those yet. But, so I want to include that as a condition of approval, just to give her time to review and make sure those comments are addressed. Be happy to answer any questions.
That was public comment from that neighborhood behind there, right, from last time, that it's going to be addressed and that drainage plan, the drop off.
Yes, Jenny can, I'll let Jenny answer that question.
Yes, it is. We've thoroughly evaluated the drainage plan. I had a couple of comments about the inlets. I just wanted one curb cut removed and an inlet added instead, because the curb cuts can get clogged up and cause problems, so this will be a little cleaner in the design. And then on that eastern property line, there is kind of a swale that we wanted graded in, and I just wanted them to extend that a little further north to make sure that's directed away from the residents, so. As Andy said, I haven't had a chance to review those last couple of comments, but I'm reasonably certain they're in there. Everything else has been, but I'll look at that.
Can you explain that eastern boundary as far as the elevation changes, the drainage, and then where the the Class B buffer falls into that drainage plan?
So here you can see on that, the far right side of the plan, there is, the roadway runs up and then between the roadway and the existing homes that are east of this, there is a drainage swale that will be installed there. This roadway is actually a little lower in elevation than those existing homes, so the swale will be a little bit larger on the the house side than it will be on the roadside, if that makes sense. And then there will also be plantings along the edge of that swale.
West of the swell or east of the swell?
Most of it will be on the west side along the the edge of the road. There's quite a few bushes. There are also some trees in there on both sides of that swell to some extent. And the swale itself will be landscaped, but it'll have a flow path down the center line.
We can make sure we work with the engineering department to be sure that the location of the landscaping does not inhibit any of the drainage, because I think I get where you're coming from.
Yes, I'm just want to make sure.
Landscaping it right in the middle of the drainage.
Right.
That we can actually get the buffer in there, and I guess is this a sotted swell?
It'll, it'll be fully landscaped, yes. So.
So, and that, maintenance of that will be the responsibility of the.
Property owner.
Property owner, and they'll be able to get to that to maintain it with the Class B buffer there?
Yes.
Yes.
The applicant here or the applicant's rep here? May want to come up with it, may have some.
Sean Humphrey with Owen, representing O'Reilly's.
Got any questions for the applicant? He's at the mic here.
On the west side of Highway 59, a little bit further south, when we approved a building, the building had some hurricane shutters, some additional facade improvements or enhancements more than just brick building with O'Reilly's and storefront glass windows. Did y'all, do y'all have a building model that has any of those types of features?
I would have to ask the architect what features that they have.
I'm just thinking, you know, this is, this is the entrance coming into Gulf Shores, this is a red brick building that says O'Reilly's on the side, it's very commercial, very, you know, typical. It would be nice, I think, if we dressed it up, put some storefront awnings on the front, or put some hurricane shutters on the side or something to give it a little bit more character than just a big red building with O'Reilly's over the doors. And you may not be prepared to answer that, and I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not, but we're trying to, you know, as we, as we have an opportunity to to continue to beautify, and the landscape looks fantastic, and I appreciate that. But the building itself, to me, is just lacking, it's just a typical downtown O'Reilly's auto parts store front. I was not on the planning commission.
Yes, I was. I think we actually required advanced auto parts near Longhorn Steakhouse to add some additional, or they, or they, or they did on their own, which really helped the look of that building, I think.
I can bring that up to the architect. Is there a section of your code to point to for awning requirements or sort of look or aesthetics? Don't believe there is a section of our code that requires.
There is not a section in our zoning orders that requires awnings, but you are correct. I know the auto parts store near Longhorn, there was some additional features added to the exterior of that building.
Well, and we did that at the SEFCO there on the corner as well, and the one prime example, look at our Dollar General store next, close to the beach on 59.
Yes, a great example, and that's.
Just a little bit of accent and coastal flair to really just take the building to the next.
I can bring that to the architect.
Anybody in the audience would like to address O'Reilly Auto Parts as part of our public hearing? Close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion from.
Before we do a motion, tell me what the process would be in order to get the return information from the applicant.
You can make it, put it in your motion, put it in your motion.
As a contingency or as a requirement? That they would come back to us with facade enhancements and.
Work with staff to get some aesthetic enhancements. Make your motion before.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve O'Reilly Auto Parts site plan number 67 with the staff. Included conditions and add a condition to ask the applicant to work with staff to improve additional facade enhancements, i.e. awnings, hurricane shutters, other types of facade improvements.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Good luck, sir. Get back to us on. All right, next part of our agenda is, I'm going to open up the hearing of anybody not listed on the formal agenda who would like to approach this body. Now's the time to do that. Anybody? All right. Communication from staff, planning commission.
Just, I'd like to make one comment to Mel and to thank her for coordinating the recertification and certification courses, which our new commissioners may want to take advantage of either in person or online.
Let us know our options whenever we can. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second, you got a second?
Second.
Aye. Appreciate y'all coming. See you next time.